Do order. Roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Chairman Steve Chisen.
Present.
Commissioner Rebecca Daniels.
Present.
Commissioner Cheryl Hayes Bradford, excuse.
Yep.
Commissioner Darryl Davis.
Present.
Commissioner Mac Willis.
Present.
Commissioner Tavon Hall.
Excuse.
Commissioner Tanya Williams. You do have a coin, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you.
I was, oh, you know what, I am, I apologize, I got, I got my little chip, I got my chip plate and you were absent. You're an absent, so.
You over there, man? You over there, okay, all right.
Man, no, little, Mayor Patrick Wimbley. Mayor Patrick Wimbley?
Yeah, I'm here.
Yes, sir. You have a coin, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. See, and we said Cheryl Hayes Bradford, excuse, right? Okay, I just wanted to make sure, I was lost, I was counting too, like, hold on, it's six of us, ooh, all right, got you. All right, um, we're down to adoption of the agenda. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the agenda? Are there any additions or subtractions? Hearing none, the floor is open for a motion to adopt the agenda as is.
So move.
Support.
It's been properly moved and support, uh, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All oppose? Motion passes, agenda is now adopted. We're down to adoption of the minutes. Item three A, adoption of August twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-three meeting minutes. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes?
Yes.
All righty, the floor is open for a motion to approve the minutes or adopt the minutes of August twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-three.
So move.
Prove.
You say approved.
Second?
Second.
All righty, is it properly?
Oh, you do the approving, my bad.
Is it properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All oppose? Motion passes. We are down to item number four, first hearing of the public for items not scheduled for a public hearing but on the agenda. If there is anyone here from the general public who wishes to speak to the items that are on the agenda at this moment, which are not scheduled for a public hearing, which we don't have any, please approach the podium and state your name for the record. Hearing nothing and seeing no movement, we are down to item number five, public hearings. As previously stated, we have no items for public hearing. We're down to item number six, unfinished business. Item six A, case number two, three dash zero nine, special land use. Auto car lot at two, six, three, zero, zero Michigan Avenue. Review and consideration of recommendation of approval of a special land use request for secondhand auto sales in the B three. Thoroughfare mixed use district at two, six, three, zero, zero Michigan Avenue. Ali Saad is the applicant. Um, just recapping, guys, this is the information, I'm sorry, items that we tabled at our last planning commission meeting due to trying to investigate if there was still a moratorium in place or what exactly that spoke of, and I believe we're past that point. And so that's why this came under unfinished business. I will turn it over to the planning department to give us any recaps they deem appropriate.
Thank you, Chairman, yes, to refresh your memory, um, this is the lot where the old, uh, chocolatier, Corden's Chocolates, low is located and the applicant is proposing to extend their car lot, uh, business to that building. The parking lot itself will be used primarily for, um, customer parking, but they want to use the bea- building to put some of their very high-end showcase cars in that front glass area and then put some bays on the side of the building on the south, or I'm sorry, the east facing, uh, wall so that they can detail their cars and do, you know, minor maintenance in preparation to sell them. So because this would be extending their current use, this is being considered for a special land use and the site plan. Um, and they submitted both applications. Um, we believe it would be consistent with the area, given that the car lot is next door. Um, and there's also, um, auto-related use on the other side of the building. Um, we don't have any major concerns about the site plan or the special land use. As the chairman mentioned, we were investigating whether or not there was still a moratorium on used car lots. And I've attached in your, um, packet, an email from Attorney Jones saying that he has searched his records and cannot find anything on the car lot moratorium. Um, he doesn't recall this being consulted as, oh, the particular moratorium, um, which is why his email didn't uncover anything and he didn't recall an extension of the moritor- moratorium after the initial one was extended. So, uh, it's his understanding and recommendation that that has expired and is no longer in effect. Um, allowing this body to move forward with their recommendation, whatever they may choose. Um, I know the applicant is here if there's any additional questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have anything at this time for the planning department or the applicant? Go right ahead, Commissioner Willis.
How you doing?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
For the record, Ali Daghter, it's A L I D A G H T R, fourteen, two, oh, seven, Ford Road, City of Dearborn, forty-one, two, six.
Thank you.
So, so you plan on taking the building and putting a, a bigger glass front and put more exotic vehicles in there? In the, in the, as a showroom type, uh, deal or?
It's really, it's really not more than one or two cars. Because it's not a very big space.
Okay.
And it's, it's a car that, um, you know, depends on what they want to showcase. Um, and the other dealerships, they've got, God, they've got Lamborghinis, they have, uh, like really nice high-end cars. They come across once in a while that they would just show and, you know, be able to buy everything within a month or so. So that, that's basically what it, it's, it's mostly for creating an ambiance of, of the, the, the high-end vehicles that they also sell. But most of the cars that they sell are not the clunkers. These are cars that are still within warranties, that's part of their business, is that they sell cars that have warranties, still manufacturers warranties, under twenty, thirty thousand miles. And, um, and it's, it's, um, oftentimes even buy the new cars. Um, if they can find them right now, but inventory is pretty low. Most of these cars are cars that are maybe a year and a half, year and a half to two years maximum old. And, um, the, as we talked about before, it's just those bays are added because the car comes in from, uh, wherever or that somebody turns it in, that they clean them up. You know, they, they vacuum, they, they change the oil once in a while there, it's pretty much all that happens there.
Okay.
And as far, in answer to your question about the glass, I don't believe that that's changing at all.
No.
They're good, they're, it's, they, they really like that building, how it looks. And they're going to maintain the integrity of the exterior look of the building so that it's still a very nice, you know, the art deco type of design. Does that answer your questions?
Yeah, yeah, pretty much it does. Uh, so, uh, you own the car lot next door to it?
Yeah, my client does. I apologize. Oh, sorry, guys. It's probably my wife calling. Okay, nope, it's not, it's him, but I, I gotta figure out how to turn this off. I'm not that old, but I feel like just now I'm an old man. I'm fifty-seven, so I'm not that old, but, um, as long as I can still play basketball, I'm still good. Barely play basketball, but that's okay. What was the question, see? I honestly forgot what you asked.
Well, no, I was looking at the exterior also, I see that you guys, uh, uh, comply with the fencing and the bushes and stuff, so that looks nice.
All we're doing is that we're using the parking lot as is. And the place where the chocolate, uh, factory was, is just customer parking right there and then everything else pretty much remains the same. We're taking that small buil- building that's part, taking it down, that's part of the current lot, it's kind of useless since we're going to be opening up a mu- a much nicer, uh, building. So you'll have salespeople, one or two salespeople in there. And then you'll have like, uh, I think it's a couple bays where cars pull in and out. And then you'll have, like, when you walk in, you'll see a very nice upscale, um, very expensive vehicle, I can't afford it. But very expensive vehicle. I mean, I can't, but I won't buy it.
Yeah, that's, that's all I, all I had. Okay. Anything additional, commissioners, oh, the commissioners?
The one building that's there now, the little building, they're taking that down.
Yeah, that's coming down.
All right.
That's not really, uh, it's not necessary.
Right.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a very much of an upgrade of that entire.
So once that come down, it just make the parking lot look?
Yeah, it's just, you, you put an extra car in there, that's pretty much it. But it, it, the facade of taking that building down makes, makes the entire property looks much better. And, you know, these guys, they don't, they don't skimp. They're very good at, uh, updating and they're very good at, because it's, it's about their image. They're one of the fastest-growing dealerships in the country.
And, and where's that other location?
They've got about nine of them. One of them, the, the headquarters is on Grand River in Radford.
They're the Twins.
You know Twins Auto, you see their billboards everywhere.
Okay.
They are literally twins.
Okay.
They look alike, too.
I understand, like, the building come down.
Even though I've owned it for ten years.
DPS involved, we gotta disconnect water and stuff.
Yeah, I too, you're literally.
I'm just playing, no, you're right.
They got, that's, those are all part of their responsibility, they'll look and apply whatever they have to do, they have a good builder and they got a good architect, so I think we're good. Everything's going to be worked out just right. Hope, they want to get this up and running within sixty days. So, you know, hopefully between now and the end of the year, the tax season and the new year usually is the time where people begin to buy cars.
Sure.
And so they want to be up and running by January, which they'll do, it's not that hard. The demolition is easy and some exterior facade and, uh, interior stuff is easy to do. These guys, they've been doing it for a while, they know what they're doing now.
So the, I'm sorry.
Anything additional, Commissioner Davis?
Uh, no, Commissioner Danz.
So, uh, the exterior facade you stated, um, I know all that's going to come up and that's going to have their new name or whatever on it, so is it going to kind of look new, though?
Yeah, they're gonna, whatever, whatever they need to make it look new, including the paint and whatnot, that's all going to get done. But the art deco look in terms of how that window is, that's going to stay, because that's really nice. And that's, that's like a signature property in, in the area. And everybody likes it, and so, you know, that's, I, I like that, I mean, that's a nice thing to have, and so do they. It fits in with what they want to do, you know?
Absolutely. See the nice little, uh, cars, um, showing through the glass window, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's the idea.
You got it, sir? All right, Commissioner Willis.
Oh, no, just, just making a statement, uh, the, because I believe that's the oldest running business that we had had in, shit, in Wayne County almost, you know what I'm saying, uh, since nineteen eighteen, that chocolate factory.
He's trying, he's, I think he's going to relocate to a smaller facility where he can just do some things on the side. But he couldn't find anybody to, uh, to take over his business. I mean, I, we worked with him for a year and a half because we told him, look, if you, if you want to find somebody else, that's fine, you know, let us know. And then he's the one that called and said, you know, I can't do it anymore, nobody really wants to do this. So. And, and everybody wants to open, from, you know, the, people want marijuana locations, this isn't going to be one of them.
Right, right, that's all it is.
And then my, none of my clients do any of that stuff.
Okay.
All right, um, I just have a question as far as, because this came up with the Valero, um, as far as like oil changes go. Because up there, okay, up there, um, persons have been using the car wash, the, uh, do-it-yourself car wash and pouring oil down their drains. So as far as, like, I know you said maybe some oil changes here and there with the cars, are you doing oil changes on site or did you, or can you expand upon that? Well, not you, but with the applicant, be doing oil changes on site.
Anybody that would throw oil down the sewer is an idiot.
Fine, yes.
I mean, you are an idiot because, one, it's, it's immoral and it's, then you're going to get fined up the wazoo. I, you know, whatever they have to do, they, they maintain a very clean, I, I mean, I, I go to their place all the time and that, you can eat off the floor. Um, they, they, they don't skimp. These, these guys do what they need to do and they always do it right, that's how the, that's why they're very successful. So whatever they have to do to comply, they're going to comply.
Okay.
Yeah, I was just curious, because I wasn't sure how it goes with used car lots, what the processes are.
The majority of the work, in terms of any type of repair work, is likely to occur at their place, they've got a huge place in Radford.
Okay.
They've got like about five or six bays. And it doesn't make sense for them to bring a mechanic for a small shop like this, so everything gets fixed. But once in a while, when somebody has to change an oil filter or has to change like a, uh, I'm not a car guy, so forgive me, like a, uh, filter for the air, for the air filter, you know, stuff like that gets done there, yeah.
Okay.
Because it's not worth it to take it all the way down, they're just to change something like an air filter.
Right, planning department, then we'll come back to Commissioner Williams.
Uh, thank you, Chairman, I just wanted to note, and this is listed as one of the requirements, um, conditions of the special land use, an additional standard in, for, uh, outdoor sales space or secondhand vehicles is that there's no major or, um, repair or major refinishing on premise. And so, I know I've talked with the, um, owner before about kind of what that, you know, requirements are and they need to make sure that they include that as a note on their site plan, that there would be no oil change, um, like, si- like actual oil change. Like their, you know, changing a gas cap is, is something minor, but.
That's what I meant, I didn't mean, I didn't mean anything that would be significant. It makes no sense for them because in order to change your oil, somebody's going to have to, there's no pit there.
Oh, I'm aware.
So it ain't going to happen.
Okay.
Nobody's going to go under a car to change, no. I'm talking about, let's say, for example, they want to change a filter or something like that, yeah, it's not worth it to take it to the other location. But the typical way this works is that the car is purchased, before it even goes to any of these locations, they take it to the garage, the one in Radford, where they do all the work they need to do and then they, then it's done. Oftentimes, if the car has been inspected on site upon purchase, they'll ship it directly to the dealership and they just do the interior clean, exterior cleaning there and that's it.
Okay.
Uh, because you can't put mechanics at every one of these locations, it doesn't make sense.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams.
Since one of the Twins came in, can he come to the podium?
Yes, of course.
Sorry, I'm late.
No problem. So what your, your, uh, attorney was answering the question, I, since you're here, I think it would be better to direct that to, to him. Uh, there was a question, uh, and he might have kind of misstated.
I misstated about the oil change, my apologies.
So you could clarify that.
Tell you how much I know about cars, I.
Yeah, so clarify that a little bit. Um, Jane, you said in the one of the requirements is going to be, uh, no, no major.
Major or minor.
Or refinishing, so, uh, that means painting, um, tint, even tinting, glass tinting, things of that nature would not be, uh, allowed on premise. And that's one of the conditions of their approval would be, they list that, um, agreement to that on this, their site plan. And we've had this discussion.
Right, right.
Okay, and that wouldn't also, in this case, now include like oil changes, correct?
Correct, yeah. All, all reconditioning, like, uh, Ali Daggher was saying, uh, is all done in our Redford store, that's our, our main hub. So, uh, you know, we do all our bodywork over there, our services, oil change, detail, all that, and then it would distribute them to all the dealerships.
Okay, yeah, okay.
You good?
So through the chair.
Yeah, Mayor Wimbley.
So, so Twi, um, the building you're using with the two bays, is that just to what, detail cars, what are you doing with that?
Yep, just clean up, detailing cars.
Vac- vacuum.
Vacuum.
And wipe, wipe things down. If they need it, if they don't, they don't.
And that service would just be provided for your cars?
Our, our cars only, no public work, nope.
Anything additional, commissioners?
All righty, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. It's, it's a working, it's a model that's worked and that's the model they're going to follow. Centralization of all the repair work is essential.
Right.
And how to get things done, so.
Okay.
Apologize for mispronouncing.
Oh, no, you're fine, thank you.
Twi, come back to.
Yes.
Mayor Wimbley.
Now, um, your attorney was saying, you know, as it relates to your, your cars, and that's one of the biggest things for, and I know, you know, coming before this body, the next body, of course, is the city council.
Mayor Wimbley, can you turn your mic on, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No problem, thank you.
Mr. Chair, um, that's one of the biggest things for the council is, you know, and I'm not necessarily speaking for the general council, but at the same time, I, I know the council. Um, the cars themselves, and your attorney was saying that they'll be under warranty in so many years and all that good stuff. Can you speak to that a little bit?
So, yeah.
What your product is going to look like?
Yeah, so we are going to offer, uh, third-party warranties through all, with all these vehicles. However, state law requires us as, uh, used car dealerships to post as-is warrant, as-is no warranties on all our vehicles.
Okay.
Well, our dealership provides warranties to a third-party company that ninety-nine percent of our customers, you know, purchase, um.
So what's like the average years, average, you know, like?
They're, they're going to be all late-model vehicles.
So like, what's, like?
Late-models considered, uh, last five years, you know, under seventy, eighty thousand miles. We're not going to have no hoopies or anything over there, so.
And that's one of the things, I mean, just again, too, is, is you come, you know, of course, this body and then whatever this body recommends to the council, um, you know, that's something that you want to really illustrate, you know, because, you know, we got a lot of car dealers around here already and you got a lot of hoopies.
Yeah.
You know, and I'd have been out on Grand River, I see what you guys are doing, I mean, you, you're, you're definitely an asset to that community, especially that thoroughfare, what you guys are doing with your properties.
Want to do that over here, hopefully, it takes some time.
Yeah, for sure, you know, for sure, but.
A lot of investment properties over there as well, besides the dealerships, but, yeah, I mean, um.
That's kind of what I want you to do, you know, again, as, as you come before this body, you know, really illustrate that, you know, as it relates to your investment in the community. Because, uh, like, um, Commissioner Willis was saying before, you know, this business itself was probably the oldest business model like its kind and probably even running business since nineteen eighteen in, in, you know, in the, in the, in the state.
With the Motor City.
One of the oldest, right?
The Motor City, yeah.
So, so we, we want to make sure that as we're looking at reoccupying this space, that it's done in a way that, you know, it really maintains that, you know, esteem.
Yeah, so we, we have a little bit, we have a better, uh, you know, different look than other dealers, ours is more like a modern look. You know, we use, we have thirty-five lenders that we deal with, so there's a lot of lenders that won't let us put that vehicle through their program because it's either too old or there's too many miles on it, sorry about that. So, I mean, that's why we, we, we stay within the, you know, five to maybe seven-year-old vehicles, uh, no older than that. You know, we want the, we, of course, we want the vehicle to last as long as it can for our customer, too, you know, um.
Yeah, well, I, I mean, I know what you guys are doing, I, I know that you would be definitely a tremendous asset to, to the city of Eaststers related to our development and where we're headed, it's just, again, you know, to really get past that misnorm about, you know, used car dealerships. You know, I know you guys are taking it to that next level.
We call it, uh, pre-owned dealerships, you know?
Yeah.
So we advertise it's pre-owned, we don't like to use, uh, use the word used.
Yeah.
Dealerships, pre-owned, like I said, it's more modern.
Just giving you a few jewels?
Yeah, no, no, for sure.
Just want to make sure you.
Right, 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 trust me.
Coming back around, you know, that's what you're talking about.
Oh, for sure, for sure.
Yeah, we really appreciate, you know, of course, you having your attorney here, but having you here means even more, you know?
Thank you, thank you.
Good seeing you.
Yeah, likewise, nice seeing you all, too.
Thank you, sir. All right, anything additional, commissioners? All right, and nothing from the planning department, right, anything additional from the applicants?
Nothing.
Okay. All righty, thank you very much. Commissioners, the floor is open for a motion to recommend approval, um, for item six A, which is a special land use auto car lot at two, six, three, zero, zero Michigan Avenue.
I move to recommend approval to city council, they propose special land use for an outdoor secondhand vehicle sales lot at two, six, three hundred Michigan Avenue with the conditions outlined in the site plan review in our, um, stated packet. Support.
It's been properly moved and seconded, is there any unreadiness? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All oppose? Motion passes. We're down to item B, case number. We're down to item B, case number, well, six B, case number two, three dash one, zero, site plan. Auto car lot at two, six, three, zero, zero Michigan Avenue. Review and consideration of approval of a site plan for secondhand auto sales in the B three thoroughfare mixed use district at two, six, three, zero, zero Michigan Avenue. Ali. Pronounce your last name for me, please.
Saad, S A.
Ali Saad, I'm sorry, is the applicant. Um, um. Hmm, planning department, I'm sorry.
So, no further comment other than what we discussed about the use of the site, the expansion from next door, their demolition of that building on their, that site and their office moving into the building with the customer parking, um, at Corden's, what was formerly Corden's Chocolate, so, um, I believe we discussed that there.
Okay.
Mayor Wimbley. Yeah, Mr. Chair, okay, so you, just look at the site plan, you said that the, the Corden's Chocolate is going to, I mean, the parking is going to be at the Corden's Chocolate, but that, how, how is that if the building is going to be there? So you're going to have, look like the building is attached, is going to be attached to.
Um, if you look at the, what page it is, but you'll see there's existing parking spots to the west or to the east of the existing building. Where there's already, there's customer parking for Corden's Chocolate right now.
Right. That's the parking lot for them, there, that's fenced off right there.
What new building going to be there?
So there's not, there's not going to be a, a new building, they're.
Oh, won't be a new building?
No.
They're keeping the facade of the building.
They're taking their office down with existing office on their used lot, which is on the, uh, north side.
So they're just going to be?
So then they're going to use cor- the prior Corden's building as their office and then the parking that was used as customer parking for Corden's Chocolate will be customer parking, it will not be used auto spots.
So this is the front and then this is going to be the back, is that what we're talking about?
Right, where the actual factory is.
So where the factory is is where they're going to change and convert into.
The, the two.
That's what I'm saying, so it's not a new building there, because on here it actually looked like it's going to be a new building.
They're adding, uh, bay doors to the existing building.
Okay.
But that's the extent of the.
Okay, so where the factory is now on the back of the building, on the alleyway, basically, that's where it's going to be, the doors.
The doors are going to be facing east, so they're going to be.
Michigan Avenue.
Nope. So parallel to Michigan Avenue.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I know. So you drive down Michigan Avenue, you can see the bay doors?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yes.
All right, so right now you just see the back of the building is just a factory in the back of the building.
Yep.
And then now they're going to add those two doors to the side of the building?
Yes.
That's what I'm asking, okay, got you.
Okay, anything additional?
I don't ask now. If he said, uh, when we said here the site plan for secondhand auto use, and he said pre-used, which devil you secondhand there? Should it say pre-used?
Pre-owned.
Pre-owned, yeah, pre-owned, pre-owned. So that's, does that make a difference?
No, under the law.
All right, I just.
Under the law it doesn't, but public perception it does.
Right, it's, it's say, right, it's secondhand, it's secondhand.
There's going to be people here that's going to be totally innocent.
Pre-owned, yeah.
Because secondhand sound a little old.
Uh, when we perform the reviews, we use what language is in the zoning code? So that's how the zoning code defines used auto sale, um, lots. If you want to publicly refer to it as pre-owned, that's okay, but for, uh, our legal reasons.
Language purposes, we have to use one single language.
Okay.
But, I'm sorry. Mr. Chair.
You all set, Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Danz.
So, is, is pre-owned going to be lit up out there? Like we have at other, because you can see that at other places when you.
Yeah, our, our building is much larger, that's why, so, uh, with the, we're going to, you know, do what we can, but it's a lot smaller building. Yeah.
Okay.
Because mainly they say twin auto sales, that's the main.
Right, right.
Know what you guys stand on?
Right, right, yeah, so we're, uh, you know, we got somebody in there now. Um, we are planning on operating as a Twins lot later down the road, but as of right now, it's, it's leased out.
What? Say that one more time. So it's not going to be, if we recommend this to the council, you're not going to be there?
We, we, we own the, we own the property.
Okay.
We're there.
Yeah.
Um, did you mention to them about?
No, it's, it's, they're waiting for the lease to, they're waiting for the lease to expire. What happened is that when they bought the property initially, they had a tenant in there.
Before we bought Corden.
Before they bought the property, when they bought it, and so they can't just kick the tenant out, they got to wait until the lease is done before they put their own brand in there, which, which is what they're intending on doing.
How long was that? How much? Chair, I'm sorry.
Another year?
Take another year.
Another year.
I mean, I, I gotta check the contract.
Yeah, I think.
They're on the same, I mean, they're on the board with us, I mean, they're.
It's about a, it's about a six months to a year.
Yeah, I mean, they're on board with us.
I did this a few years ago, it's been a while, I'm sorry, I don't remember the exact term, but it should be expiring hopefully by beginning of, uh, next year.
So how can, if you have a lease with them, how can you hold them to what the standards we're talking about right now? As it relates to, you know, the type of cars you're going to have in the future?
It's pre, again.
Like, because what they have over there right now is like, eh.
Yeah, no, that's the, when, this happened in phases. This happened in phases. When we were approached by Realtor to buy the the I the the chocolate per factory. That attract, that was a couple, few years ago, that attracted us to that lot immediately, so we ended up buying that lot. In anticipation of buying the factory, so that they can all be combined and create the dealership that we want. But when the owner sold us the lot, okay, we 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 had to buy it with a lease on it. We couldn't, you could not, unless we buy like that, which is a possibility, we may just buy the lease out and, you know, get them out completely. So, I I haven't I haven't looked at the lease involved, cause I remember we did this a few years ago. So, our goal here is that irrespective of the 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 standard you're talking about is one that. Is part of the lease agreement in terms of cleaning and everything else, but bringing in the big, the twins label on it, it's not gonna be available immediately. Until the lease expires, which I think will be a few months to a year.
Chairman? I just wanna remind this body with special land uses, we are not uh. Accepting or approving a particular business, we're approving the land use. So, in theory, if this, if you approve or recommend approval to the City Council. That means that anyone with a pre-owned or used car auto dealership can occupy that whole area. They can sell that and someone else can come in with their business. I just want that to be kept in mind as we're making these decisions um as, you know, that's important part of that process.
Let me add, let me add and just say this, the money that we spent buying that building isn't worth leasing into this guy, I'm I'm gonna tell you that upfront. Because we, a few hundred thousand dollars was going buying that building, and this guy's paying pennies on the lease. And so what we need to do, we just need to wait him out, or we may buy him out. And then move in where we, well, you know, as anticipated moving.
Plus, we're gonna be spending a lot of money, uh we've renovated it, so, I mean, we'd rather, you know. I mean, we're 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 gonna, we're gonna remodel it just like i- if it was ours, so we're gonna spend the same amount whether. He's still in there or not, you know, and 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 do it the right way.
Alright, it's gonna be Commissioner Daniels, then Commissioner Willis, then Commissioner Williams.
So so I just wanna be clear, so right now, you do not own it.
We own the property.
You own the property, you're leasing it to whomever is there now. And whoever is there now, that's why we see the cars that we see, but once, once and if. The council approves this, you will then come in and do exactly what you're saying that you're gonna do, where it's gonna look. To have five to seven year old cars. Or you have to wait until the lease is up, so we gotta wait for that whole timeframe to.
When, again, when we bought the property, there was a leaseholder, there was a guy who who lea- who leased a property. We had bought that property in anticipation of buying the chocolate shop, the chocolate shop discussion has been going on for like three or four years. The guy was supposed to retire a year ago, a year and a half ago, we kept delaying it, delaying it, I remember writing the contract like three or four years ago. But because when the property, the car dealership side of the property was bought. We had to oblige, cause you can't terminate the lease if you buy the property, we have to oblige by it, but I'm fairly certain it's got another, less than a year left. On the lease, and it's our intention not to renew the lease agreement, for a couple of reasons, one. Like I said earlier, there's so much money spent on the acquisition of this new building, that guy is not gonna be able to afford it. Even if he wanted to stay, we we don't want him to stay because part of the plan here for the companies overall while being. Is to expand into different locations, this is one of the top, one of the specific targets they're looking at. But again, the problem is, we have to comply, we'll enter some, we'll we'll figure out a way to get get rid of the lease. If he wants to leave now, we'll give maybe give him a couple bucks, he can go his way.
One more thing, once it's approved, we are gonna go with a remodeling. Even if he's there still, we're still gonna clean it up, remodel it, get it ready for us, so we're not gonna wait until he leaves, then. It it stay vacant until, you know, his lease is done, so the moment we know it's approved, we're gonna have our contractor start, you know. Doing the work in and out outside the building.
So, if the 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 current leasing is not there, it's still gonna be leased out.
Until such time that it's done, until such time the lease is done, yes.
So it's gonna always, so so the question is, will it always be a lease or, cause you say you're gonna wait this guy out, right? So once you wait this guy out, the currently see, who's gonna be in there, is it gonna be you or a new lease? Okay, thank you.
Because it doesn't, like I keep saying, it doesn't make sense to keep that tenant.
I got it.
There's not much of a margin in these cars that he sells. And because there's not a much margin, you know, it doesn't, it's just, it's not, and it doesn't look good, it just doesn't look good.
And even if you don't, you're still gonna come in and do what you say you're gonna do, no matter who's there.
Absolutely, the second we get the approval, we're gonna have our contractors. Do the remodeling for for our, for what we wanted to look like, not for him.
Because you own this.
Exactly, yeah, yeah. So so blueprints that we made is is how we want it to look like, and that's what we're gonna do, we're gonna gonna continue. To move forward and 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 remodel it.
Spending all that money on this new property with the fact the factory is, makes no sense if we're just gonna give it to this guy. Pennies that he's paying us. But again, we got stuck with it in anticipation, and you know, we kind of hoped. That we would move this along quicker, move the factory along quicker so that we can get in quicker. But right now, I think the lease is pretty much gonna be gone by the time we get started.
Oh, is that Commissioner Davis? Alright, Commissioner Willis.
The o- only thing, uh, cause I said, I I completely understand, you know, cause I buy properties and tenants be in there and you gotta honor the lease, that's the. And then once they leave, then, you know, or while they're there, you could start rehabbing, that's not smart dealing with real estate. But um, the question I, the uh question I want to know was, are you able to get? That uh lease agreement and give it to our planner, so we can kinda know like the time barrier as far as when. When you guys be able to take over and, you know.
Again, if we're gonna do the remodeling, it's.
Co- correct, correct, but I'm just saying, when the vehicles, when the all those old crappy cars leave, you know, cause like I said, I'm anticipating you guys coming. You know what I'm saying, I see what you do, you know, so the thing is, is uh like, can you give us more of a solid time as far as, you know? E- e- either way it go, you know, you know, we know it's out of your hands, but we just kinda want an idea of. Far as like when it, when, you know.
Yeah, that's not a problem. I think it was a three or four year lease, he's been in it for what, two or three?
Okay, lo- lo- long as it's not, not no hundred year lease or something like that.
But regardless, like I said, we're still gonna continue doing what we're doing.
Understandable.
Oh, is that Commissioner Willis? Alright, Commissioner Williams.
Okay, so contention upon whenever this lease actually expires and you're able to take possession of the uh the car lot. Um, what is your projection to completing the renovation of the chocolate factory? Once you get the approval and set, what's the timeframe?
Um, according to our contractors, between three and six months, it should be completed. There's any hiccups in between or whatever, so between three and six months.
That's that's all, sure.
Alright, anything additional commissioners, Commissioner uh Davis?
Yep, and the understanding is, once the lease is over with, you tear that building down. Parking lot, so you can have, you know, extra space to move forward.
That's right, because we're not lighting that tenant touch.
You're not letting that tenant touch what?
No, he not gonna be on the property, he just got what he had.
We're gonna keep that built, we're gonna, again, once this is approved, we get a timeline of construction. We're gonna go back and negotiate with the guy, if he's got a few months left on his lease. Find out someplace else he can go.
Then he might have a buy one, get one.
Alright, Commissioner Davis?
Another property somewhere else.
You all set, Commissioner Davis? And hearing nothing further, thank you gentlemen. Anything additional from the planning department?
I I just wanna reiterate. Only cause this has become an issue on other uses as well. We are not approving the specific business that's going in there, so. They, I'm sure they are good for their word and I, but I want everyone to keep that in mind because I think there's been confusion about that in the past. That's that's the only thing I wanna reiterate.
Alrighty, thank you. So again, that was item six B, case number two three dash one zero site plan auto auto car lot at two six three zero zero Michigan Avenue. The floor is open for a motion to approve or deny.
I move motion to approve.
It's been properly moved and seconded, any unreadiness? Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed, motion passes, we're down to new business, item number seven, we have none. We're down to item number eight miscellaneous, planning department, do we have anything from miscellaneous?
Um, I just wanna give a few quick updates uh to keep the planning commission. Uh up to date with what's going on in terms of administrative approvals and different things that have happened since we last met. Um, first of all, I did wanna let you guys know that I, we met with uh Nar Cannabis, the uh Old Howard's Auto. They had a phase development that you had approved and they came in to uh talk about submitting their final site plans, so. They're gonna do phase two and three all at once, they already have a tenant for the drive-through that they had been approved for as well. Um, so that's, that's making uh movement and they're gonna improve the rest of their site, so I know. You guys saw that quite some time ago and I'm happy to supply any more detail um on their final site plans once we receive those. But I just wanted to share with you, cause it's exciting when, to see uh the new development come in. You want to have back and forth, or do you wanna wait up to the chair?
Oh, go right here, Commissioner Williams.
What's the drive-through business?
Uh Savvy Sliders. And then they're gonna have a couple of other retail suites. In addition, one one seven three Henry Rough. Which is kind of a small multi-suite retail property they're doing construction on, they're bringing it up to code. We haven't been given any specific use, they wanna just get it ready for tenants, and once they find the tenants. They have to come back and apply for the uh use that they will be occupying it with before they get their certificate of occupancy. But they're bringing that up to code and doing some renovation, so that's uh good to see.
One second, Commissioner Williams.
That's why I I wanted to know, oh Henry Rough, is that the one we said between Oakwood and Glenwood?
Yeah, I'm sorry, we're starting the meeting. Commissioner Williams, you all set? Okay, um, uh, please continue, uh.
Um, three four one Inkster Road, which is in the Plaza, the second Plaza south of Cherry Hill. On the east side, um where there was a former music studio, they're opening a a small like. Threading salon there, so um they're taking over one of the vacant suites. And then um three thousand Middle Belt, which is right behind the gas station on the corner of uh Middle Belt and Michigan.
Mrs. Dixon, three thousand or thirty thousand?
They're going to be doing uh furniture retail out of that building, so they came in last week and applied for a furniture retail.
Something right behind brothers?
Gas station on the west, southwest corner of Middle Belt. So when you see activity going on there, um, that's gonna be a furniture outlet.
Okay, Commissioner uh Willis and then Daniels.
I have a question. On Middle Belt, uh next to Bubbs, what is that, uh on Middle Belt and Glenwood? Uh Bubba's Barber Shop, what what is that building that Bubba's used to be?
What is that eleven?
It used to be in there. Yeah, it's supposed to be retail, but I think they selling weed out of there. But uh according to the chief, they had an investigation going on, so don't speak too much on that. They are aware.
All set, Commissioner Willis? Commissioner Davis?
I was throwing the law off, cause soon as you said Nar, I just thought National Association of Realtors.
I did too.
And and it took me, you know, a good three minutes before I called on Nar, right, yeah, Nar right there, can you repeat that again?
Uh, so two nine eight nine nine Michigan Avenue is the address, it's the old Howard's Car Lot that they converted that building into the.
Right, and it's uh it's already up, I mean, it's already.
When you, when they came to planning commission, their site plan was a phased development, so they had phase one, which is what they've occupied now. And then they're building uh an additional uh five thousand square foot building next to that building, and then a separate drive-through. Um, all the way to the west of their, on their site, and they're gonna have the fountain in the front, if you remember those elevations. And so they've come in because M dot didn't allow them to have multiple entry points, so they're gonna have one entry point for the whole site. And now there's gonna be two fountains and ponds on each side of that um entry point, but they're going to construct phase two and three. All at once, so essentially phase three is getting wrapped into phase two, um and they're submitting final site plans in the next couple of weeks for that.
And just for the record, um ladies and gentlemen, Nar is the DBA, or Doing Business As for Inkster Micro Business LLC. So if you're ever looking it up on Lara, um, that's how it come up. Are you all set? And anything additional?
That was just my updates, I I just wanna keep everyone, when they see activity going on, that's kind of a preliminary of what we. Have approved or talked with applicants about.
I'm glad you brought that up too about the phases two and three, because some of our council colleagues. And I'm sure Mayor Mayor Wimbley and those, you know, who are present at the meetings have been inquiring about that quite heavily. About phase two and phase three, and I know sometimes, again, cause all of us are not at all the meetings for the full discussions, and I know. Heck me, can't retain everything, and so sometimes stuff gets lost in translation or mixed up. Kinda like some of us who don't sleep well, and and it feels like the same day, you're just taking naps all the time. So I know there was a bit of confusion coming up in this, I'm glad you brought that clarity about they will be approaching phase two and three. Just cause there were some discrepancies happening, and I'm glad you also disclosed about M dot not allowing two. Entry points, because I wondered that even with um Flight Club and the signage that's on the building next door, Planet Kush. I was like, well, why did they close up that driveway and open a new one, but that's a M dot rule and not a City of Inkster thing.
That's correct, they they tried to lobby M dot, they really worked to try and renegotiate that, but that was M dot's ruling, so.
Yeah, M dot is firm. Okay, alright, thank you, uh, anything additional commissioners for miscellaneous? Alrighty, hearing then, we're down to second hearing of the public, item number nine, for items not scheduled for a public hearing or on the agenda. For the record, there is nobody in the general audience. If you see somebody out there. Alrighty, uh, there's no one here from the general public to speak this time, so we are down to item number ten, adjournment. It has been properly moved and seconded, all in favor? All the polls? Motion passes, this meeting is now adjourned, seven twenty nine P M.